All right. Good morning, everybody. Commissioner, do I have you on the phone?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you do.
Good morning. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to go? Thank you. All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is September 28th. This is the final meeting of September for the regular board meeting for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners. It is 10:00 a.m., and I want to jump right into this. So with that, I will call. Vice Chairman, will you lead us in the pledge, sir?
My pleasure. Good morning, Chairman. Everyone join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
On the phone. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate that. Before we get started this morning, we are going to make some adjustments. I want to make some adjustments to the agenda. We will be pulling Item 16 today. This was based upon an error in posting. We need to pull that item to properly repost and change that item. So that will be coming back in a future agenda item at this time. So for everybody's edification this morning, 16 is pulled, and we will not be hearing that today. All right. With that, Mr. Manager, that takes the only changes I have this morning. Will you please take us into Item 3, sir?
Item 3 is a presentation and discussion by Gabriel Enfield. Gabrielle, I'm sorry, Enfield regarding a status update for the state and local fiscal recovery fund grant of $91,587,028 awarded to Washoe County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, otherwise referred to as ARPA. And Mr. Chair, I might mention, as Ms. Enfield steps to the podium, that she has moved into a new role with the county. She's become our community reinvestment manager. This is a new position that we've created. And in that position, she's responsible for directing, managing the activities of the community reinvestment program, including ARPA, program services, which address human services issues, fiscal infrastructure improvement, et cetera. So please welcome Ms. Enfield.
Ms. Enfield, congratulations on your new title and in your new position.
Thank you, Chair.
We're happy to have you this morning and looking forward for your update.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the update for the American Recovery Funds. So I'll come back every month. And this is just a reminder of our expenditure categories. Over the past month, we've been focusing on our urgent projects and going through eligibility. So the urgent projects have been falling primarily into the public health COVID mitigation efforts and our services to disproportionately impacted communities. Again, another slide that you'll continue to see. We just want to keep in mind our guiding principles that were provided by the board. We also provide this direction as we look at each project, whether it's an internal project or a subgrant, as we move forward into that part of the program. And what have we done since our last update? So when I came last in August, we were just about to submit our recovery plan. We've submitted that plan. It's available on our website. We encourage the public to take a look at that. Identifies our priorities and some information about where we hope to collaborate and where we have identified needs throughout the community to the extent that we were able to up to August. We continue to work on that, as well as our executive summary that will be available on our website also. When I came last month, we were talking about how to encourage the public to participate and how we could do our community engagement process. And since then, I've worked with our communications team. We've done some demonstrations of looking at some systems, but also looked a lot at what the state was already doing and not wanting to duplicate effort, not wanting to overtax and make our public go to numerous sessions of listening. Were participating in the listening sessions that the state is doing. They're great sessions. Go to those sessions and are collaborating with the Treasury's office. They'll be providing a summary from those input sessions so that we can get the information of what our citizens are saying in the region and also going to those and listening ourselves. Also, we've put the survey, the State of Nevada's Recovery Survey, on Washoe County's ARPA website. That survey has a component for a ZIP code for the respondents to identify their ZIP codes. So when we get that data back, we can see what folks are saying in that survey that are our local residents. We also have a discussion session coming up with Treasury's office later this week that will be in conjunction with the two jurisdictions to discuss collaboration on projects regionally. Just a little bit about what we have updated on our website since last month. We also added a leave a comment or a project idea so that our citizens have an opportunity to specifically identify a project or an idea that they want us to know about. So we've added that to our website and a summary fact sheet so that folks can go to our website and get the information that they need about what's eligible and what the ARPA funding can do. A lot of what we've been doing over the last month, too, is working with our departments and on urgent projects that have been identified through our departments. And our department has identifying the needs and urgent projects. So we went through and identified those urgent projects that need to be addressed first. Also, you know, some of that foundational stuff that we need to do to make sure that we're spending the money properly, setting up the application process and eligibility review, setting up the system in East of it. So that's some of the work that's been going on over the last month. Just a reminder of our timeline. We were here in September, hoping to work through our projects and identify our priority projects. We'll be working through the rest of the fall and going into January, having our projects identified. Right now, our immediate priority is bringing on staff that'll help provide technical assistance for subgrantees so we can move to that next stage where we're looking at projects from the community, as well as projects from internal departments, and also assisting with all of our internal processes for the projects that we have already identified, our CIP, HR, process and procurement. We need to ensure that we're spending these monies following all of our federal guidelines and ensuring that we identify projects that and are budgeting appropriately. We only have half of these funds right now, so we need to coordinate our projects so that we can start the ones that we get started on now, so that we have enough projects started. And the timing of expenditures is appropriate to when we're going to be getting the next tranche of funding. This is where we're at right now with our reporting. We've completed the first interim report and the first recovery performance report. The next performance report won't be due until July. We will be doing our first quarterly report due in October, so just after I come to you guys again. And that's pretty much update. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Enfield. Are there any questions for Ms. Enfield in regards to the update? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I'm very excited that this process is moving forward, and I think the timeline is very realistic. So thank you for pulling all that together. I was wondering on the childcare services that are listed, some of the more urgent things needed under services to disproportionately impacted communities. We're also, within that, we're looking at senior services and services to disabled county members as well. We're not just restricting it to those three categories, are we?
No, we're not. There's no restrictions at this point.
Okay. It's just that those have been pointed, like, the childcare services as a need in the community.
Right. Those are examples.
Okay, okay.
Just examples.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. And then, when should I be articulating to constituents that the online comments are due by? Because I have a cab coming up, and I just want to make sure that we let them know.
We don't have a deadline right now.
Okay.
We haven't started, so we need to get that staff online before we can open up the community process. So certainly, at any point, they can submit. So we don't have a deadline for the community process yet. Once we have staff, we don't want to open up that process before we have an opportunity to have staff in place to be able to provide assistance
Okay.
to the community folks that are going to need to submit applications.
So hold my horses until you're...
Absolutely. They can start submitting any time right now. When there is a deadline. And if they put their email into the system, when we set up a deadline, they'll get a notice that there's a deadline. So that way, they'll be notified of any changes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Enfield. I have a couple of things. One is, I really encourage staff and the commissioners, when they are soliciting the feedback from their constituents, to ask them, what would enhance your quality of life in Washoe County? Because really, that's all we, right? What we sell to our constituents is the quality of life. So I think that helps people see that, of course, it should be emerging and emergent issues, but also transformative, that we can measure. So that's the way that I'm asking anyways. And I'm getting interesting reactions as well, because I think people, well, let's be honest, in Nevada, we've never had any money. Nobody knows, you know, nobody's been asked that question. If we had enough money, $91 million to be exact, what would you want that would really enhance your quality of life as a citizen of Washoe County? So that's how I'm asking it. So it puts a little bit of dream in it, but also I backfill it, too, with like, and this has to be sustainable, and you can't make the county go broke, et cetera. And then the other, just technical question, as you're getting in data and sifting through data, and I know early data means no data until you have a good aggregate, can you please do an overlay of commission districts over the ZIP code, which I know is not the easiest way to do, but we've never, it's never been easy to figure out that. But it might help us to kind of see a groundswell where a certain community has identified for that commissioner what they should be championing and pushing on. And trust me, it might be global, too. It might be neat to see that there is lots of overlap. But those are my two requests. And not to belabor the issue, but I will tell you that my senior services advisory board is the very first in the nation many years ago that used the Americor, people who were PhD-level candidates who had no job and no way to pay for school. So we hired them up, and they did this master plan for senior services. Now, it probably needs to be updated, but if you're looking for direct information from the subject matter experts, I strongly encourage staff to also solicit feedback from the CABs, animal advisory boards, senior advisory, parks and recs, because that's really our kitchen cabinet for us and our social influencers, and more importantly, our ears and eyes on the ground. So those are my three issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Seeing no further questions, Ms. Enfield, thank you so much for your update this morning.
Thank you.
I do appreciate it. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us into Item 4. This is our public comment.
Item 4 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
Yes, sir. First up, we have Emily Montan, followed by Roger Edwards. And we'll need the overhead, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Montan.
I was here a couple weeks ago and got cut off. So, oh, can you read that? No, I got to turn it around. I'm Emily Montan. And I'm part of Faith in Action, which is a non-political, oh, thank you, Dora, political civic organization consisted of many faiths across Washoe County, mostly centered here in Reno or in Sparks. And we identified priorities for the American Rescue Plan. I appreciate Ms. Enfield's presentation. And this is just more to talk about our priorities and taking care of our citizens who have been neglected or pushed around, kicked around, don't have homes, don't have food security. And so we're very concerned about these matters. And like I said, they're not political. They're about our citizens' misery. And just so you know, I'm in Ms. Hill's district, but I like to think I represent, have, give a voice for all the people in the district who are in need. And I think it's really important, and I'll certainly send this to Ms. Enfield. I sent it to the treasurer after I spoke last time, but I'll send it to her so she knows our priorities and how important it is we take care of our people. Because of the complaints of no money, because the miners wouldn't pay into the system for years and years and years, mine owners, I should say, that's why we have no money. Now we have the money. There's no excuse to treat our people who we, you all represent and we all care about like dirt. And I see that every week when I distribute food to the home, to the food insecure. And I also see all these other needs, which are very important. But the top of the list is the only way we're going to get people to become productive members of our county, our city, our state, is to give them secure housing and food. And if any of you are familiar with Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, that's what this addresses, and that's what we should be spending money on. There's so many things we need in this county to help our people, and I think these priorities should be taken very seriously. I'd finally like to conclude with the presentation that I left the last time I was here that was historically inaccurate. Someone to call themselves Martha Washington say that when General Washington forced his troops to have smallpox vaccines, believe me, if he were around today, he would require everybody to have vaccines in this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Montan.
Next up, we have Roger Edwards, followed by Mike Goodwin.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, Roger Edwards, 48-year resident of Washoe County. I've been participating in everything since I retired in '06. First thing I want to talk about is the mask mandate. This is nonsense. And you guys, by the governor's mandate, had an option to be in control of your county. So let's pick up that ball and run with it. I know there's lots of discussion about the vaccines and their efficacy and all that sort of thing, but there's no real discussion about the masks. It's no different than the flu season. If you want to sneeze on somebody or you got a cold and you need to stay home, that should be common sense. Mandating masks to go down to second and third graders is criminal. Please lift that. You have the option. The other item I like to talk about, since it's not limited on your agenda, is Item 7C2, recommendation to approve and request initiate proceedings to repeal Washoe County Code, Chapter 95, governing parks and recreation. Under that, it has slid in where it does not belong, domestic animals. And this is a clear opportunity to abuse this regulation. It's been used to abuse the regulations about how many dogs you can have, what kind of cats, whether or not you can have a bobcat as a pet. But it needs to be dealt with separately. So I would request you take this out of 7C2 and deal with it separately. I know it's not a monumental item, but since the pandemic, domestic animals, pets have picked up 200% at least. And I'm a breeder, so I know a little bit about that. Also, I would like to ask the chairman to please, for those people that are vertically challenged, to get up to the mic when they speak. If they're two or three feet away, you really can't hear what you're talking about. You have to close your mouth if it's not in front of the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Goodwin, followed by Susan Goulis. And I do have a handout from Mr. Goodwin that I will distribute to the board.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Goodwin.
Can I remove this while I talk? Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairperson Bob Lucy. My name is Mike Goodwin. I live at 1480 High Chaparral Drive, which is next to the 711 on Geigo Grade. I've owned the property as a rental since 2007 with expectations of it becoming my retirement home someday. I had a great relationship with the previous owner of 711. I would top one of my cedar trees that would block her sign, and I had a gate from my yard to 711. As the house was a rental, I also had a permitted extra three-car garage that I would keep my boat and some vehicles in it. I was at the property at least once a week during its rental. I never experienced any loud trucks or any disturbances at 711. Apparently, the 711 was sold around 2012. When the pandemic hit and my tenants decided they didn't have to pay rent per governor's directive, they finally decided to vacate my property in July, owing four months of past due rent. The place was unrentable and needed a complete remodel and mouse extermination from under all the cabinets in the home. This pretty much forced me to sell my home in Gleana Forest, do a remodel on my rental property, move in there a little earlier than what I had expected. This also came to fruition because the real estate inventory dried up. I'm a Realtor. Our governor pretty much put a lot of Realtors out of business due to his mandates. I moved into my rental property in December 2020. After I moved in, I was noticing a loud rumbling going on all hours. I identified the noise to be coming from a 45-foot refrigeration truck tractor parked next to my property, on the side of my property, on the 711 property. I went and talked with the owner of 711, and she assured me the truck would be moved by the end of February. He was just waiting for the property he was moving the truck to to become available. I said the truck vibrated my house with a low rumble when the generator was running for hours to cool down the trailer before his next haul. So he started parking on the other side for some time. That lasted a couple weeks, and now he's back to where he was before. Anyway, the truck never moved. It's still there. So I called code enforcement, left a general message for someone to please call me. I received a call from someone while I was driving, so I didn't get the person's name, but I complained the property's being used as a truck stop. The code enforcer said, well, it is zone general commercial. They can do that. I tried to explain it's a residential convenience store, not a truck stop that leaves a refrigerator trailer running for up to 24 hours before he does his next haul. When he's not driving the truck, it is parked next to my yard. The code enforcer said they could do a noise study. I said, whatever you can do. Never heard anything back. So on April 14th, over five months ago, I filled out a request online with the county, which you have a copy of in your hand. The confirmation I received said it was forwarded to the appropriate representative for action, and customer service person would respond directly to me. So I guess my question is, how long should I wait for someone to respond? I mean, is July till now long enough time for them to respond? I would expect so.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Susan Goulis, followed by Cindy Martinez.
Welcome, Ms. Goulis.
Good morning. I am here because I received an official notice of public hearing for today on the Ascente Project in Washoe County titled TM 16-009. I do not see it on the agenda, so I'm presenting my information here currently. I would have thought that you would have notified me that it wasn't going to be on the agenda if, since you sent me something in the mail. So I may have to talk later if it is on the agenda as well. I've lived in Washoe County for 42 years, and I have lived in the Callahan Ranch area for 30 years. I am one and a half acres away from where this project is going to be started. And we have been here as a community numerous times regarding this project. I'm still very concerned. You know, people who live in this area live there for, you know, because they enjoy the beautiful views, the starry nights, the wildlife, the solitude, and the access to the city amenities. In terms of the traffic studies that have been done on this project, I've not seen the last one, if there has been one, but the ones that were done in 2017 and 18, it adds at least 2,675 additional trips, an increase of 65% to small local roads, yet the claim is there's not going to be any significant impact on these roads. The other big obstacle that is in the way, as I can see, because I am an area that is at the bottom of the V, I have flooding every year where I am. And the problem with the study is that you haven't addressed the Callahan neighborhood to the increased risk due to the flood mitigation procedures. And we've been through this many times before. We did our own flood study where we set information down when it rained and knew the runoff and et cetera. So as far as I can tell, those two factors, roads and flood mitigation, have not been addressed. Yet, it looks like you today, at least according to this letter, are doing the public hearing on the second reading to adopt the ordinance regarding this project. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goulis.
Cindy Martinez, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning. May I have the arrow overhead, please? Greetings to all in chambers and county staff. Madam Clerk. On June 17th, 1972, the DNC headquarters in the Watergate Office Building was burglarized. President Richard Nixon was involved in the cover-up of the crime and subsequently forced to resign in disgrace. Indeed, as a child, my parents impressed upon me the importance of owning and confessing my mistakes. It was made clear any lie undertaken to conceal my transgressions would be far worse than the original wrongdoing. So it is with this in mind that I submit to the public record for review and consideration by the citizens of Washoe County, evidence of an apparent cover-up of the DUI arrest of county manager Eric Brown's wife, Melody Brown. Here are two criminal complaints. Public records in Sparks Municipal Court reference Sparks Police Department case 21-4367 dated May 27, 2021. I did not hear of this when it occurred from print, broadcast, or any social media. Did anyone here know of this? How can that be? The wife of the county manager arrested and no news about it? In over 25 years of public service, I can state with complete confidence, hiding information like this can happen only with coordination at the highest levels of authority. Therefore, here are my questions. Who did county manager Eric Brown call for help? When did Commissioner and Chair Bob Lucy know and when did he know it? When did Sheriff Darren Bala know and when did he know it? When did Washoe County District Attorney Christopher Hicks know and when did he know it? When did Sparks Police Department Chief of Police Crawford know and when did he know it? When did Sparks Mayor Ed Lawson know and when did he know it? When did Sparks Mayor Ed Lawson know and when did he know it? When did Ward 2 Councilwoman Charlene Bybee know and when did she know it? And when did everybody on the Sparks City Council know of this and when did they know it? The media goes through the probable cause sheets at the jail for notable arrests and stories of public interest and concern. When did the Reno Gazette Journal, KRNV, Kolo, KTVN, and other media know? And why didn't they report it? Citizens of Washoe County certainly do not have these privileges. The corruption in Washoe County is wide and deep. We, the citizens of Washoe County, demand that Bob Lucy resign.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Next up, we have Melanie Sutton, followed by Erin Massengill.
Good morning, as always. I'd like to request the end to the public health emergency. Just curious if you guys all wear masks when you guys go out to dinner with your families? Because to me, it looks like you guys are just political hacks. So, yes, into the public health, you should see the masks, because we all know it's useless. I'd also like to, so last Thursday, we were at the Health District meeting, as we always go. And one of the ladies spoke and said that Mr. Lucy called us those crazy Joey supporters and that he wanted to send us to Afghanistan. Well, is that true, Lucy? Because if it is, you need to apologize. And how do you know who I'm voting for? I never said I supported anybody. And yes, I was one of the ones, actually, the one organized your protest at your fundraiser. So that was actually really fun. So did you say those things about us? No? Figured.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Erin Massengill, followed by James Bentham.
Welcome, Ms. Massengill.
Good morning. That's a lot of information this morning. I certainly hope that the information that that woman gave last week is untrue. And if it is, that you do apologize. I also hope that if we are covering things up, that we come clean. We all know better than that. But I am here to request that we agendize and pass a resolution to end the public health emergency based on local data. We are not in a public health emergency. I also ask that we pass a resolution to agendize, agendize and pass a resolution to ban vaccine verification on any level, preventing segregation in our county. Additionally, as we come to autumn and into winter, as measures to prevent people being sick, that we pass a resolution regarding nutritional guidance, evidence-based nutritional guidance that has been proven effective to prevent and reduce the prolonged effects of SARS-CoV-2 and any other variants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Massengill.
James Bentham, followed by Wayne Gordon. And I do have a handout to distribute to the board for Mr. Bentham.
Mr. Bentham? James Bentham? All right.
Okay, I will place his document on file. Mr. Wayne Gordon.
My name is Wayne Gordon. I'm a resident of Reno. I live on Miraloma Drive. Excuse me. Miraloma. Miraloma Drive.
Madam Clerk, can you stop the clock for just a second? Tell Mr. Gordon, you okay, sir? You need some time? Okay. I just, would you like some water, sir?
I, I forgot my bottle of water. Let's just get on with it.
Okay.
So I got this downloaded from the, yesterday, first day's meeting. And I noticed that Item 6A2 is a proclamation of some sort, or to celebrate Constitution Day, which was two weeks ago. It kind of tells me what you guys think of our great documents, our rights. This morning, I read, thank you. This morning, I read the Australian government officials say that the Australians that are unvaxxed will lose their freedom under what they call the Blueprint for Freedom. So if you're not vaxxed, you won't be free. Now, I believe there's a lot in here about what we can, excuse me, that limits what the government can do to us. Now, true, ours is supposed to be much a better constitution, and it's supposed to limit what the government does, not proclaim, limit what the government can do to us. That's our freedoms. It's not supposed to provide food and water and drugs and require that we wear masks or have vaccines because somebody thinks its vaccine is going to be good. Since this pandemic has started, we said, we've seen, oh, no, you don't have to wear masks. Yeah, you better wear masks. No, you better wear two masks. Okay? We can't trust, we've learned from the, oh, and then there's, you can't go out because you're liable to spread or catch the COVID. And the very people that are in charge of this, the Governor of our own state, the Governor of California, the Governor of New York, Illinois, you name it, have all been out to big parties, unmasked, when they're not supposed to be. Now, if it's truly such a bad deal, and they're know about it, why are they going out? So Australia's planning on limiting our freedoms, their freedoms of their people. I don't see anywhere in here where it says your freedoms are what you have, except when we decide there's a pandemic, a fake pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. James Bentham. And I will distribute his document.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham.
James M. Bentham, for the record. I'm a resident and taxpayer in Washoe County. Today, I've come before you to oppose the medical emergency and urge you to stop it and stop all the emergency restrictions that are being put on the people. Today, I'm going to be going over a video on brighton.com. I've given, hopefully, everybody will have a copy of this. And this is, the narrator answers many questions that concern us all based on what the CDC is saying. If I get vaccinated, can I stop wearing a mask? CDC, no. If I get vaccinated, will I be resistant to COVID? CDC, probably not. If I get vaccinated, I won't be contagious to others, right? No, the vaccine doesn't stop transmission. If I get vaccinated, how long will the vaccine last? No one knows, because it is still in its experimental phases. If I get vaccinated, can I stop social distancing? No. So then, what is the advantage of getting the vaccine? Answer, hoping the virus won't kill you. I just want to briefly segue in that the CDC should also, instead of, they should also inform the people the best way to have a strong, healthy immune system. And then advertise the treatments that doctors are using that definitely help their patients. Are you sure the vaccine won't injure me or kill me? No guarantees. If the virus has a 99.97 survival rate, why should I get vaccinated? CDC answer, to protect others. If I get vaccinated, I can protect the people around me, right? CDC, no. If I experience adverse effects from the vaccine, am I entitled to be compensated by the manufacturer of the government? Absolutely not. I believe many of these questions and answers show that this is the time to stop the medical emergency, the economic emergency, and the restrictions on the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
Victoria Meyer, followed by Bruce Foster.
Good morning, Ms. Meyer.
Good morning, Victoria Meyer here. Just wanting to ask once again that this board does something to end this state of emergency that we're supposedly in. I fail to understand why an illness that has less than 1% mortality rate has taken us all to this point of masking our children, requiring vaccines that are not approved, not FDA-approved, still in experimental authorization use. The harm and the ill effects are, long-term, are still unknown. We have over 15,000 deaths from this, as reported by the VAERS system. And according to the CDC, the actual number of deaths due to COVID, from COVID, are only 6% of the total deaths being reported as deaths with COVID. There's a distinction there. That's right from the CDC website. 6% of the reported deaths that everybody thinks all of these people died of COVID, they did not. The CDC reports only 6% of that number is how many people have died. So it's much, much, much less than 1% actually, the mortality rate. So, yet, vaccine passports are on their way. And we do hope that your political ambitions don't stand in your way and cloud your judgment on this. I know governorship sounds good, and moving up the political chain sounds good, and there are strings attached to all that. And the strings cannot be vaccine passports, cannot be, because they move from vaccine passports, as they are in Israel, to the everything passport whereby you haven't gotten your flu shot. Oh, we're going to revoke your passport. You know they're revoking these passports. So yes, you have to have a passport to go into a restaurant and to participate in daily life, but, oh, if you didn't follow our instructions to get the flu shot, oh, you're not wearing your mask, we're revoking your passport. Now you can't participate in daily life. Oh, we've decided you need to get six more boosters. Oh, you can't have your passport now, we're going to take it away from you. Where does this end? It ends in tyranny. That's where it ends. Please stand up as citizens, fellow citizens of mine, and all of us here, we're all citizens of the United States with a Constitution and Bill of Rights protecting us. Please stand up against this when it comes here to Washoe County.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Bruce Foster.
Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Hello again, ladies and gentlemen, Bruce Foster for the record. And I'm going to start off with Isaiah 520 to 21. Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who put darkness for light and light for darkness, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter. Woe to those who are wise in their own eyes and prudent in their own sight. And, of course, we'll take a look at that picture again. What is frustrating to me is how we, as individuals, must require ourselves to take matters in our own hands in regards to taking care of ourselves and our loved ones and family. And bottom line, making sure that we are healthy, that we do the right thing, and be able to investigate what the best direction is for our own individuality. And this is where my body, my choice, really comes in. And why we don't have, like, pamphlets available right on the onset at a doctor's office and ER, urgent care, on, you know, early treatment of the China virus, essentially. And what is this all about? You know, we have ivermectin available, hydroxychloroquine available. My 93-year-old mother, when she got COVID, same time I did, she was able to be given the antibody treatment, and boom, she bounced back. This needs to be the protocol, not the jab. And we all know it's about the money. We need to make sure that we have the protocols available to the public. And we have so many more horrific stories that are coming out into the public square in regarding what the jab does to people, particularly the younger folk. So I just leave you with this, is that we recognize now that even Dr. Malone expressed that natural immunity is so much more effective on the long term. Now, I'm excited that now I have the antibodies and I have a God-given, robust immune system.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 5. And that is our Commissioners and County Managers' announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning that you'd like to share?
Mr. Chair, I do have a few items. First is, I am pleased to provide the Commission with an update. We have completed, as a result of the additional support that you, as Commissioners, authorize staff in this current fiscal year's budget, we've been able to stand up our Commissioner's Support Program. And I'm pleased to report to you a couple of accomplishments at this early stage. One is, we have managed to have conversations with all of our citizens advisory boards, all the Cabs. We've been able to actually meet with them, either in person or virtually, in cases where in-person wasn't possible. And we're in the progress of, in the process of reinvigorating them, making sure that the boards are, once again, fully appointed. And there are meeting schedules to move forward. And I think this is one of the most important things that we can do going forward. So as we look at things like getting community input on ARPA, or on redistricting, or other issues, this is not the only way we can do it, but it's certainly one of the ways we can do it. So I want to applaud Nancy Lewen-Hagan and her group for the work they've done there. Secondly, I want you to know that it has been my direction for staff, that we get better at follow-up on constituent issues and requests. So just as you heard this morning from Mr. Goodwin about the 711 situation, I don't know if you noticed, but on the way out of the room, we actually had one of our new Commissioner Support folks follow up with him, and we've been able to identify where we are on that issue now. Beyond that, I am just pointing out that it is our intent as staff to get better at being more responsive and clarifying when there are misconceptions or things that have not been completed by the county that need to be completed. And so I'm happy to report, we're And so I'm happy to report, we're making progress in that area, not where we need to be, but we've started. And then last but not least, on the homeless services front, we continue to make important additions in filling out our staffing internally for homeless services. As we move forward, we continue to struggle with staffing at VOA, at the Men's Carers Campus, and with mental health staff. We engaged our MOS team to help us in some regards to those issues, where individuals need behavioral health assistance, and they're in the shelter. More to come there. All of our facilities are at capacity, so whether it's the Men's Carers Campus, the Safe Camp, or our place. With regards to the Safe Camp, we have posted on our website at washoecounty.gov/homelessness our winter plan for the Safe Camp. If anybody wants to go check that out and give us input, it's there. And at our place, I think an important development, working with Ms. Howell and her team, they're moving forward with the federally qualified Health Center Clinic at the our place campus, which will be an important addition and something that we've been looking at for quite some time. Mr. Chair, those are my updates for this morning.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager. So I will turn it over to Commissioners. Vice Chair Hartung, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start by asking Mr. Edwards to make a comment regarding the legal issues that we found with the Asante project and why it's not on the agenda today. Mr. Edwards, can you enlighten us as to the piece of NRS that you found that changed this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I'll be brief and try and keep it on a general level as much as I can, rather than getting extremely granular on this. But the extension item was a development agreement to extend the time for filing a first final map. And what happened is, in the early 2000s, the legislature amended the timing for final map filings and changed the language that preceded the filing or the presentation requirement. Prior to that, the requirement was that the first in a series or final map was required to be recorded within four years of the approval of the map. After that time, the requirement was changed so that it had to merely be presented for filing with the county. And that was a significant change in some regards, and particularly with respect to an item like Asante that was on there today, because the development agreement was put forward with the idea being that there was an extension needed because the map was not recorded. However, it was presented, and therefore, under the new language, there was no need to go forward with the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. I hope that clarifies. And I'm hopeful that, for our planning staff, that this error does not occur in the future with respect to how things need to be dealt with and whether an extension needs to be asked for. So, on to my own personal item. So let me start with the issue that the fellow had, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Manager, I'm glad that we're dealing with that, but I think, Commissioners, what we need to do is we need to have some type of a discussion about how the county approaches this with our partners, with the City of Reno and the City of Sparks. I recently had an identical complaint from a constituent in Spanish Springs of a refrigerated trailer that was left parked for days and running, and literally was disturbing the peace. It happened to be in the City of Sparks. Code enforcement couldn't do anything, the Health Department went out. It didn't exceed the decibels, quote-unquote, but that's a fairly tall lift. They couldn't even find that the fact that the motor was running continuously violated issues in terms of air quality. But I think that we need to have a conversation about how we approach these issues where people can and cannot park these refrigerated trailers, because this is not the first time this fellow came and complained. I've got a complaint, and I've had complaints in the past. So I think that's something that we just, you know, maybe we need to just look at it countywide. As you all know, we cannot enact codes that would be required in the City of Sparks and the City of Reno. So we would have to collaboratively work with our partners to have a code that the county had, and that was also a similar code in the City of Reno and the City of Sparks. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that I had an opportunity to meet with the folks from NAF Care, and we talked about all manner of things, detox being one of them. And as everyone knows, and maybe everyone doesn't know, perhaps I shouldn't phrase it that way, but when someone is in the detention facility, they go to great lengths to detox them. The problem is, is that once they leave the detention facility, we have no way to follow them through the system and make sure that the hard work that has been accomplished doesn't go in vain. Now, NAF Care has a piece of software, and the issue, of course, is cross-platform. How do you manage this? Because, one, the detention facility in NAF Care is using one piece of software to track and manage that individual. And then, once they get out, there's other pieces of software, and they're not communicating with one another. What I'd like to ask the manager to do, under the ARPA money, that we're looking at this to potentially follow these folks through the system, so that we can make sure that once we've detoxed them, that we keep them on that track, and maybe potentially slow down some recidivism. And it could lead back into some of our homeless issues. So I think that there's a path forward. I don't think it's going to be an easy path forward, but it was a conversation that we had yesterday that really piqued my interest. So I'd like to have more conversations with them, and I'd like the staff to potentially follow up. Second thing, Daybreak. I've received several calls from folks, and for those of you who don't know, Daybreak is our Alzheimer's Assistance Facility. When I first got elected, we had talked about having a program where we merged services with Nevada Senior Services from Clark County, an amazing program. They serve hundreds of people a day in each one of their facilities, and Jeff Klein and his staff have done it all without any direct county funding. And so we had talked about merging with them, where they would run the same program up here. I think we need to reopen those talks. It's time. We have a lot of people out there who really genuinely need assistance with family members who have Alzheimer's. And there's places close by that we were looking at acquiring. I believe they're still available. And so I think that there's a real opportunity to do this now, rather than waiting for, I don't know. I've been working on it for over eight years. So I think it's time that we move forward. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Herman, I have you send in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to welcome back our assessor. I think it's great that you're here, and I'm just happy to see you here. Thank you. I have one request again, that I've asked for several times, and that is a resolution to end the public health emergency. If there's any possibility of getting that on the agenda, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to let the team know, the Board of County Commissioners, as well as our new group, who is helping with our constituent outreach and Commissioner support. I can tell you that, and I know you love hearing this, for over 14 years, I've been in this position, and I have never felt so assisted before. And that's not to take away from any staff that has ever been my assistant. I've always had great assistants. That's being said without a doubt. But the continuity of information, as well as the attention to detail, because there are actual enough people to provide these services to our constituents, I feel this is the most robust we've ever been. And of course it is, because we decided to fund that, under the leadership of the chairman, by the way, Bob Lucy, because he was also feeling frustration in terms of his ability to execute not only what the region wants, but he also has constituents in his own district, and things were falling through the cracks, especially during the heightened emergency pandemic that we've been through. So just to state for the record, and I know Mr. Brown's review is coming up, that would be certainly something I would say is a win, and I can feel it on this end. And I feel a lot more informed, I feel connected, and I feel like the people that are working for us are looking for opportunities right and left for me, including making sure I got down to the Hispanic Heritage Month Fiesta on Wells. They had flagged up for me and sent that, and said this might be a great opportunity to do some outreach. So I want to commend that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman Lucy and Vice Chairman Hartung, who took this on after they experienced lots of frustration, and they've heard me for 14 years now, expressing frustration. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Manager, and all of the operations staff that made that really become a reality. And I can feel it when I talk to my constituents, that they also are much more informed, aware, and are pathfinders to receiving the assistance that they need. I heard a complaint from a certain gentleman today about the timing behind that, and I can promise you, Mr. Goodwin, you're getting much better service than I have seen in 14 years. It might not be to where you want it to be yet, but we are working there. And if it wasn't for the investment of Chairman Robert Lucy and Vice Chairman Von Hartung, I wouldn't be able to say that. So it is such a breath of fresh air, and I actually feel like, I also know what's going on countywide, not just in Commissioner Jung's district, because I know we're very different. So that's all I have for updates, just a commendation and a thank you, and a breath of relief, and, most importantly, gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I do appreciate that. Okay, I have a couple of things. Commissioner Jung, I absolutely will chime in, right behind Commissioner Jung and Vice Chairman. You know, the Commission's support team, constructed by our manager, Eric Brown, and our Director of Communications, Ms. Nancy Lewenhagen, has been tremendous. It has been a truly breath of fresh air in regards to being able to meet with my CAB members and get a true perspective of what would be the most beneficial for those individuals throughout District 2 and each district. And I know each Commissioner and these individuals, this team, has spent quite a bit of time, I would say a significant amount of time, in every district, really meeting with the citizens and the CAB members and the Planning Commission, and the Commissioners as a whole, to really address the concerns and needs of the community. Because quite frequently, the biggest challenge we have in this, at the county and in this Commission, or through this organization as a whole, is communication and a transfer of information. Quite frequently, people have challenges with information and getting proper information, correct information, you know, validating the information, whether incorrect or correct. And so I am confident that this team will be tremendous, not only as an asset to the county managers and the Commissioners, but to the community as a whole. This really will help with that outreach process and making sure every need is addressed. So, thank you, Ms. Lewenhagen, and to the team. We really do appreciate Mark and Candy and Alex. Everybody has done a phenomenal job. You are truly, truly stewards of this community, so thank you. Next, we do have another guest of honor in our chambers today. I want to congratulate her, Ms. Alicia LaRue, being made our new Clerk of the Court. She is of the Second Judicial Court, Mrs. LaRue, way back there. She is now in her new role as the Administrator and Clerk of the Court. She has done a phenomenal job, and let me just tell you, the clerk couldn't, I mean, the court could not be under better hands and guidance than her leadership. To manage, you know, you can ask the manager to manage five Commissioners, it's difficult. To manage that many judges is even twice as hard, or maybe 10 times, but we won't, you know, we won't throw any shade at the judges. We love all our judges. But, Ms. LaRue, congratulations on your new appointment to the Clerk, and we really are excited for the things to come with you. So, a couple of things, Board of Health update. I wanted to provide a Board of Health update. We did have a Board of Health meeting last Thursday. There was some discussions at the Board of the Health in regards to REMZA, and there have been some challenges, and I wanted to bring it to the Board's attention and to the community's attention. In the past few weeks, we have seen an overload of calls to 911 as it pertains to COVID symptoms and different issues in regards to people needing tests or simple, low-acuity causes. And there's quite a lot of concern out there, which has overwhelmed and overloaded our REMZA system and overloaded our emergency room departments. All of our emergency room departments were seeing wait times in capacity of up to 30 hours at some times for certain patients. And that was to low- and non-acuity patients that were clogging the system. So there are a number of issues that need to be addressed that I met, and the manager and I met with the CEOs of all of the regional hospitals, along with the CEO of REMZA, to address that. And so for a minute, for a time being, the Managers and REMZA and the District Health Officer are all going to get together to discuss possible adoptions or amendments to regulations to allow REMZA to move a little bit more fluidly and dynamically through this situation, to allow for the emergency rooms to really, truly focus on those priority calls or high-acuity calls, and make sure that we are continuing the initial, and has been the always, the main mantra of this pandemic and how we address that, is to provide flexibility to our hospitals and not overwhelm our hospitals, and make sure that our healthcare providers can truly still address all the needs necessary out there. So our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Dave Solero, who is also the Incident Manager for the COVID response, has been briefed and is working on that. Happy to report, the Board of Health did move forward with changing and the work doing, the work on changing the name and logo and branding of the District Board of Health, so that there would be some autonomy for the District Board of Health and realize the separation from the county, that it is not a true subset of the county, but completely independent. So some different organizational changes to come for the Board of Health, and looking forward to that. Next, RSCVA, we had an RSCVA meeting last week, and we met to discuss operations of all the facilities. We happen to be sitting on one of those facilities or in proximity to the Reno Livestock Event Center, but RSCVA has four facilities under its management, which is the Convention Center, the Livestock Event Center, the Bowling Stadium, and then also the Reno Event Center. All three, all four of those have been under the management of a third-party company, and we have decided that that is no longer going to be the case, and that that will be bringing those services in-house at the termination of our contract with our third-party. with the, our third-party vendor come next year. And so we've got some great updates. We had an update from Destinations International, which is a national corporation, or Brand USA. And they brought forward their, Mr. Thompson, their CEO, and lots of positive things. And even though we are feeling struggles within our community for our business community to get back up on, on their feet, on local business, the nice thing that we here in northern Nevada have always relied upon is tourism. And trying to, and we've had some wonderful tourism. Our reputation amongst the country for tourism is still tremendous, and the individuals that are coming out to support that. And we're seeing higher than average numbers, record numbers, so to speak, on that, a travel tax and a room tax. And so with that, that, that does give me some, gives me some optimism that we are going, moving in the right direction and hopefully can continue to do that. One other thing I want to bring forward, Mr. Manager, that I'd like to have that discussion, kind of in concert with what the Vice Chairman was bringing forward, is a further discussion on regionalization. And I think this is not a discussion just for the fire chiefs, but a, a discussion for the managers as well, and the leadership of each of those boards to, to really sit down and discuss what we are doing going forward as it pertains to not just fire, but also medical calls. And being, having the closest units respond for public safety. We continuously are divided by, you know, boundaries of city lines and whatnot. And it's not a discussion or a challenge of any firefighter or frontline staff, their, their focus is always to make sure the public is safe. However, it is an organizational and leadership challenge that we have to, that has been prohibitive of that. And I think it's necessary that we move forward with those discussions. And, so if we could do that, that would be great. And finally, last, Ms. Lewenhagen, if you could post that. This weekend, I had a dear, dear friend of mine and mentor, who has been close to me since the day I got into office, pass away. Major General Robert T. Herbert lost his life on Friday afternoon in Las Vegas due to an unfortunate accident. Many of you may not know who Bob Herbert is, but Bob Herbert is truly, as I like to say many times, a true Nevadan. He may not have been born in Nevada, but he represented Nevada with the best of intentions and gratitude and just simple care and love for this, this community. He was an aide to Harry Reid for many, many years, but he foremost was a serviceman and a veteran and a dedicated member of our armed services. He flew in Vietnam, he flew every, pretty much every vehicle that had a rotor or a wing at some point in his, his career. And served as a counsel to the Joint Chiefs. He served as an aide to Senator Reid, but truly was an advocate for Nevada. And many of the thing, many of the infrastructure needs and over his career and changes significantly you've seen in the state of Nevada, Mr. Herbert had his hands all over. And I gotta tell you, this man is, was probably what I would know with, truly a man of excellence. He lived his life to excellence, he demanded excellence from everybody around him. He could light up a room when you walked into it and speak to everybody, but very few people got to know him on a, on a real personal level, and I was fortunate to know him that way. And so if you would please join me in a, in a moment of silence for my friend, Robert Thank you very much, everybody. All right. With that, seeing no further public, I mean, any comments, we will move on today and move on to our proclamations. And we will move on to 6A1. Mr. Manager.
Item 6A1 is, is to proclaim September 2021 as National Recovery Month. And Chair Lucy will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation today. Obviously, we talk about the resilience of individuals to come back from tremendous challenges within their life. Many individuals either suffer from addiction to drugs, gambling, alcohol, whatever that may be, and find a guiding path. Many of our individuals within our community suffer from that. And as a county, we have staff members that, through the Human Services Agency, that are dedicated every day to making sure that that recovery is a true path for those individuals. So it's with great honor for me to read this proclamation. I was slated to be at a gala for the National Recovery and read this proclamation for them at that, but I wanted to make sure we put this on the record and that this, this board acknowledged that. So, whereas, National Recovery Month is recognized around the nation as a time to promote addiction and treatment and recovery practices, to highlight the emergence of a resilient recovery community, and to honor the dedication of service providers and community members who make recovery possible. And whereas, tens of thousands of prevention, treatment, and recovery programs and facilities across the country share success stories through September to increase awareness and foster a greater understanding about substance abuse and disorders. And where, whereas, National Recovery Month acknowledges that after substance abuse, that recovery has the power to transform lives. And with the strength, support, and hope that recovery is possible. And whereas, in the 2021 National Recovery Month theme is, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community, reminding people in recovery that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. And whereas, National Recovery Month sends a strong message to support those suffering from substance abuse, a substance abuse disorder, and acknowledge they are loved and valued. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 21 as National Recovery Month. And I might call on her, Ms. Amber Howell, to come down, and I'm going to offer this proclamation to her as she, in her organization, is the Executive Director, deal with substance abuse and the recovery process through many of the programs. And it is through her leadership and her continued involvement in recovery that allows us to continue to move these lives forward. So, with that, I'm going to give this to you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, was that in the form of a motion?
It is, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, so we move on to item 6A2, which is a proclamation to proclaim September 17, 2021, as Constitution Day. And we have Vice Chair Hartung reading this particular proclamation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you. I want to first apologize for not having this sooner. I had some personal issues where I was not able to be here earlier, non-COVID related, but on the mend and, and here now. Before I read this, I would like to make sure that everyone knows that we are, we, our, our community has a monument going up at the Nevada Veterans Memorial, which is the Charters of Freedom Monument. There is one in Carson City. It has the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, and that will be in Sparks at the Sparks Marina. So I think it's, I think it's an appropriate time to make sure that, that we mention that. And Mr. Slaven and Mr. Widmer were advocates for this, and, and it, and it promises to be a wonderful monument. So, whereas, September 17 commemorates the ratification of the, of the most influential document in American history, the United States Constitution, crafted and signed by thirty-nine of the founding fathers in 1787. And whereas, Constitution Day celebrates the significance of the United States Constitution and the impact this document continues to have through its preservation of freedoms and liberties enjoyed by the people of the United States of America. And whereas, the United States Constitution continues to define and reflect the ideals upon which our nation was founded and has had a worldwide influence for nations when creating their own models of government. And whereas, Washoe County expresses a collective respect and admiration for America's founding document and celebrates its importance as the enduring symbol of freedom and democracy. And whereas, our nation operates under the fundamental principle that the United States is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 17, 2021, as Constitution Day, dated this 28th day of September, signed by the hand of our Chair, Bob Lucy.
Awesome.
And that is in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
And again, I apologize for the tardiness.
I understand, and thank you for your commitment to the Nevada Memorial.
Okay, we're moving on, Mr. Chair, to item 6A3, which is to proclaim October 2021 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And reading the proclamation this morning is Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And Commissioner Hill, I believe we have Bazad and our, our
That's right.
TS team here.
Wonderful, come on down.
We'll invite them to come down, Mr.
For the record, it's Bazad Zamanian, who's our Chief Information Officer for Washoe County, receiving.
I am pleased to present this Washoe County proclamation. Whereas, Washoe County recognizes that cybersecurity awareness plays a vital role in identifying, responding, and protecting its citizens from cybersecurity threats that may have significant impacts to individuals and collective safety and privacy. And whereas, cybersecurity education and the awareness is critical for everyone and anyone who connects to the internet. And whereas, Washoe County is dedicated to providing every individual and, and public and private organization in Washoe County the resources necessary to ensure the understanding, implementation, and success of Cybersecurity Awareness Month, to help the citizens of Washoe County stay safe online and connect with confidence. And whereas, the Technology Services Department will launch a series of cybersecurity awareness campaigns for county employees. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. We call on the people, companies, and institutions of Washoe County to recognize the importance of cybersecurity and to observe this month through events, training, and education to further our country's national security and resilience. Dated this 28th day of September, signed by our Chairman, Mr. Bob Lucy. And do y'all have anything to say?
I just want to say quickly, data protection and cybersecurity is a high priority for Technology Services Department and the county. And therefore, starting in October, we are going to kick off a series of cybersecurity campaigns, including a number of training opportunities for county employees. And with that, I would like to thank the board for its support of technology on cybersecurity initiatives.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zamanian, appreciate it. All right, so I have now three proclamations for all 6A1 through 6A3. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on any of those proclamations?
I have nobody signed in for any of them.
All right. I have a motion for all three proclamations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right.
Mr. Chairman, was the motion by Vice Chair Hartung?
Yes, we have a motion from Vice Chair.
Well, I think each one of us made a motion.
But are we just doing one, one for a whole?
One for a whole, okay.
Yes, one for the whole. So would you make the motion for the whole?
So moved.
I have a motion for the whole, and I have a second from Commissioner Hill. I will call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right. We are on to our consent agenda. Mr. Manager, is there anything that we need to pull, or Commissioners, is there anything that we would specifically like to have further discussion upon?
I just want to say a thank you, Mr. Chairman, on one of the items.
Well, we're going to get to that in just a second.
Mr. Chair, can, can staff give us just, I mean, Mr. Edwards brought up 7C2 about domestic animals, and the way that I read the, the item was that park rangers would be able to deal with issues when, you know, perhaps there was a, a dog or, or something going on. That's the way I read the issue in one of our parks. So is there, is there something different than that?
Mr. Crown, can you come down? Can you give us a little bit of clarification?
Just, I don't want to pull the item, I just, I just would like a, an explanation of, of that. Again, when I read the item, that's, that's how I read it, that it kind of gives park rangers a little more enforcement ability, which I believe they should have.
Mr. Crown.
Good afternoon, for the record, Eric Crown, the Washoe County's Community Services Department. So yeah, the updates to Chapter 95, which pertains to our open space and regional parks, would give our park ranger staff limited citation authority for all things that are within that Chapter 95. Those items will be coming back to you, this is just the kickoff to initiate this. Chapter 95 hasn't been updated since 1987 in any kind of substance.
Oh, so it's a new code.
What's that?
It's a new code.
It is.
Newer. All right.
This goes under my desire to pitch out most of them.
So, this is just a cleanup process and the initiation, the initiation of cleaning up Code 95, and we will be re-initiating that. So it's not going away, this will give us that clarity, correct?
That is correct. As, while staff is going through it, working with the Deputy District Attorney, we recognize that Chapter, it was easier to basically remove all of Chapter 95 and reintroduce a brand-new Chapter 95, which will be coming back to you. We hit on a, you know, it's just an update from 1987 that provides more authority to our Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. It clarifies some things, and then again, gives limited citation authority as a tool to our park ranger staff.
And what's the timeline for that coming back?
It is actually ready, it's already gone to our Parks Commission, so you'll see it in the, you know, in the, probably the coming weeks.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, I actually wanted to provide the kudos on this item. May I do that now?
Yes, you may.
I just want to say thank you so much for adding e-scooters to this update. It's something that's been a, a major problem in my district, and I brought that to you and your team, and, and then it just appeared on this agenda, I was so excited. So, thank you for, you know, adding that and making sure that it's included, and, and I think that, you know, we'll see an improvement of safety on our public pass, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crown. You know, and I want to provide one other highlight to the, the agenda as well, and acknowledge Commissioner Hill's on 7G1, she will be doing a disbursement from her special fund in the amount of $24,000 in total. And for, she's going to be donating or distributing $10,000 grant to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, also known as TRPA, to support Lake Tahoe Future Tourism Shared Vision Destination Stewardship Roadmap. Wow, what a title for a program. So, congratulations to you for doing that and your continued involvement with Tahoe and the basin and making sure that that tourism and, and how that, that destination continues to grow is, is beneficial. Also, she will be donating $14,000 to, in a, in a form of a grant to Soulful Seeds, to support the creation of a fire-resistant structure and to store tools and gardening equipment at Our Place Campus, to make sure that their, their existence at Our Place Campus and that individuals have the ability to learn sustainable food growth and, and gardening techniques for those that are residents with us at Our Place. And that is a phenomenal program. They have been just wonderful partners and, you know, wonderful money well-spent, so, so just wanted to and, you know, the wonderful money well spent. So so just wanted to highlight that in seven G one. Commissioner Hill, thank you for your dedication to the community. All right. Seeing no further questions or discussion on the consent agenda, not having to pull anything at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent as posted.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Herman. Motion from the Vice Chairman. Is there any public comment on any of these items?
There is nobody signed in.
Seeing no public comment, we'll close that. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Please affirm your votes on the screens. And with that, Mr. Vice Chair, will you have, do you have a block vote for us, sir?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Again, I would like to note that you polled item sixteen for issues of noticing. So I would recommend that we move into a block vote for the commission's consideration. Item eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
All right. I have a motion to move forward with a block vote of items eight through nineteen, excluding item sixteen. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Hill. Mr. Manager, will you read these items into the record, please?
Item eight is a recommendation to authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to issue purchase orders in excess of a hundred thousand dollars to Sierra Control Systems for preventative maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrade of the supervisory control and data acquisition system and purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition system components for the Washoe County Community Services Department. Utility operations on an annual basis through the end of year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item nine is a recommendation to award a bid and prove and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the FY twenty-two Roof Replacements Project to remove and replace existing roofing materials for the Child Advocacy Advocacy Center and Kids Cottage with a new metal roof and high-temperature underlayment. Staff recommends A W Pharrell and Son, Inc. in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also approve the purchase of roofing materials from Garland D B S in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents, utilizing Racine County, Wisconsin's contract number P W nineteen twenty-five pursuant to a jointer provision of N R S three-three-two dot one-nine-five and approve a separate thirty thousand dollar project contingency fund. These planned roof replacements will ensure the integrity of the roof systems, preventing damage and preserving the lifespan of these facilities. Item ten is a recommendation to award and a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Northwest and Sparks Library Flooring Replacement Project. P W P dash W A dash twenty twenty-one dash three-seven-six. Staff recommends Permian Builders in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and also approve a separate project contingency fund in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars or fifteen percent bid amount for a total project budget of seven thirty-four, three twenty-three. Item number eleven is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Incline Village Operations Above Ground Fuel Island Project to furnish and install a new above-ground fuel island and fuel tank and associated site improvements. Staff recommends L A Perks Petroleum Specialist, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And if approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary cross-fund budget appropriation transfers. Net impact to the county budget is zero. Item number twelve is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Swan Lake Flood Mitigation Demobilization Project. P W P dash W A dash twenty twenty-one dash three oh one. Staff recommends Facilities Management, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars with a base bid of six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars plus bid alternatives of thirty thousand dollars. And approve bid alternative number one in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for certain roadside ditch cleaning and reshaping along Lemon Drive. And approve bid alternative number two in the amount of ten thousand dollars to hydroseed certain private property areas where tiger dams were placed. And approve an owner contingency fund in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Terminate all associated emergency response materials for pump and pipe systems. The project will remove the various temporary emergency flood protection measures constructed in two thousand seventeen to respond to persistent flood impacts in the East Lemon Valley Hydro Basin and restore associated stormwater drainage, ditches, and conveyance piping. Item number thirteen is a recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars in both revenue and expense to the FY twenty-two Sexually Transmitted Disease Supplemental Subaward retroactive to September first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Item number fourteen is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number Four to the contract currently awarded to Elyor North America D B A Valley Services, Inc. for senior nutrition services to authorize an increase in the amount of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to provide daily breakfast meals at Our Place Women's Shelter and temporary assistance for displaced seniors or TADS shelter for the period of October fourth, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for total contract amount not to exceed two million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. Also to authorize an increase in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars to provide daily breakfast meals at Our Place and TADS for additional renewal period from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for a total contract amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. And if approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the amendment and revise the purchase order. Item number fifteen is a recommendation to accept an FY twenty-two Homemaker Sub Grant Award from the State of Nevada Aging and Disability Service Division in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars county match, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to provide homemaker services to seniors aged sixty or older in Washoe County. Authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute the grant award documents and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item number seventeen is a recommendation to authorize the creation of two F T E Program Assistant Positions, estimated cost of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Effective and contingent on J E C review and approval funded a hundred percent by the Emergency Rental Assistance Two allocation from the United States Department of the Treasury. And as such, if grant award funding is reduced or eliminated, the position hours will be reduced and/or the position will be abolished accordingly unless additional funding is secured. Direct the Humans Resources Department to make the necessary staffing adjustments as evaluated by the job evaluation committee. Direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number eighteen is a recommendation to approve the master services agreement between Washoe County and Vonage Businesses Business, Inc. for the sole source purchasing of United Communications as a service for a five-year term upon execution of the agreement not to exceed four hundred and ninety thousand dollars annually. Vonage will replace the current legacy phone systems at Washoe County. If approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement. And item number nineteen is a recommendation to approve the agreement between Washoe County and Carpool for the purchase of the prosecutor and defender case management systems to be licensed and installed by the Washoe County District Attorneys, Washoe County Public Defenders, and Washoe County Alternative Public Defenders Offices, including certain training, project management, data conversion, maintenance, support, and upgrades not to exceed one million, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Chair, that concludes the block vote.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do appreciate that. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion on any of these items? I do have Commissioner Herman sign in for item twelve. So Commissioner Herman.
Yes, on item twelve, I'd just like to bring to everybody's attention that, you know, we're removing these barriers for pretty much cosmetic purposes, but we have no intent to replace that or to improve it. I'm just concerned that this could lead to the same thing that happened to the city of Reno, and I'd sure hate to see that happen. But we won't have any excuses this time if we don't have something there to stop it. You know, it's only a matter of time. We're gonna have rain. We're, this drought isn't gonna last forever, so I want us to be prepared for that. So just wanted to make that, those points.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Do appreciate that. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment signed in on any of these items?
Nobody has signed in on any of these items.
All right. Seeing no public comment on any items, we'll close public comment. We've taken a discussion, and we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Please affirm your votes on the screen. Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business for today. It takes us to item twenty. This is our final public comment. Mr. Manager.
Item twenty is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda.
All right. Madam Clerk, is
The commission will
Sorry.
Just a second, Mr. Chair.
I thought you were done. I apologize.
The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Sorry, sir. I jumped the gun a little bit there. I apologize. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
The only public comment was received emails from Janet Butcher and Elise Weatherly that will be placed on file.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll place those emails on file for the record. We were to, we'll close public comment. Seeing no further public comment, we're on to twenty-one. This is Commissioners and County Managers announcements. Anything further from any of the Commissioners or County Manager? Once, twice, sold. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming today.